Okay, let's call the meeting to order. It is Tuesday, December 4, 2018. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the good will with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Uh, the minister reports received and filed?
November 2018, auditor's report filed.
Okay, commissioner committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings, events?
We've got the healthy communities executive council meeting today at the new health building in the Cosmo training room. Time is at 11:00. Tanner Bridge Road and Terra Road area, that open house at 5:30. And another meeting tomorrow.
Sure, we'll salute meeting tomorrow, but I don't see that happening, so. Soybean, meeting with some people from the soybean association on Friday. And then the MSP CP meeting, is that Friday as well?
Yeah, at 9:30.
Okay. You got anything else? I got some liaison stuff that you guys in on. Go ahead.
You left off the Central Bank Trust government open house tonight.
I didn't get invited.
Central Bank, that's the, yeah, you did.
No.
And then Wednesday, the Central Bank Trust Department's open house. Lions Christmas party, Thursday, Central Bank's commercial banking open house.
So you're not going to the Tanner Bridge meeting? Those are the same time, aren't they?
I think I ought to go see all the government people. Uh, Friday, I'm ringing the bell for the Salvation Army from 9:00 a.m. until whenever I get down, down in front of Central Bank, so anybody wants to come put some money in, I'll take it. And Monday, we've got a bicentennial meeting with Callaway County and Boone County, so.
So last week, we had a safety meeting, and Bill handed out these disaster preparedness, uh, preparedness kits, and he's got thousands of them, so, um, available to anybody, but just a good idea to be prepared and fill this out, so that more personnel can do what they need to do. Pretty good meeting, and then also, uh, last week, we-
I gotta hear that stuff, that sign, that stuff, where you just yell at people. Okay. If I have something, I'll show you. Okay.
Here we go, motion to go back into session.
So when are you having that? Meeting with, for the bicentennial?
Uh, next Monday at 3:00.
Ask Mark if he's going to work on doing the bicentennial again.
I sent him the pictures today. He said he didn't get it from you. He might have sent it to him. He's no longer with, with, uh-
Well, he's still over here. He's still with himself.
But he's, no, he's, was it, he's, a different law firm now.
It's himself?
Yeah.
So, he's still right across the road though?
Yeah, he is.
Across the hallway.
Yes.
I sent it when he was still with the other one, so.
Yeah.
Well, don't, I don't want to do a 200-year one that they have in there, because that is about stupid, stupid to be. Lowman's Landing, the, the hell else is on, had nothing to do with-
That's about the courthouse and then the Capitol.
The courthouse is about the only thing on there that was decent. You know how it had the little things, the Lowman's Landing, and then, uh, I don't know, just has nothing to do with Cole County. I was like, Lord, y'all gonna, gonna just pull shit out of Wikipedia and put it on there, or what? It was, it was-
I'm gonna go back into session.
Sucking.
Oh, neighbor.
Okay.
Okay.
This one just needs to be, whoever she gets this.
The air, treasurer had nothing?
No.
He was fine?
He was fine, he wasn't covered.
Okay.
I didn't have anything, the collector's not-
Had Holly. And so Julie, we got, we've got the transfer, so we're good. So basically, 245 is the last.
So, let's talk about Julie Cole for a minute. Um, so, I had a conversation with Judge Green, and, uh, I think we may need to take a look at their, uh, their insurance amount that comes out of their budget. Even not sure that they need that insurance, that most of their stuff is covered under the-
We've had our discussions several times.
Where you at? I'm sorry, I was still looking at an email, didn't notice starting, so. I heard y'all talking, but I kinda-
Is Julie Cole's budget, they have-
What page?
65.
65. They have an insurance line that's kind of like, it's kind of like a malpractice or a insurance liability coverage for the judges themselves. And I, like Debbie said, we've kind of heard both ways. They need it, they don't need it, we're not really sure.
Even Julie went into it that one year. Remember?
Yeah.
So, if the judge gets sued, who's getting sued, the county or the state? That's who needs to have the insurance, right?
Huh? Well, I, that's what I thought. I thought they had immunity, and if it wasn't, then they're covered under, like, a lawyer's services kind of fund, or whatever, like, there's something else out there that covers them, so.
So, she said we don't need it?
Huh? What'd you say?
You said she said, she was saying we don't really need it?
Well, I don't know. Judge Brown brought up the question about why do we pay for it?
I agree with him.
And I know we've questioned, questioned it before.
Well, they're getting ready to pay it, because I know Julie was talking about it.
Talking about paying it. Are we required to have it at any point, by state statute anywhere? That's what you're saying, you heard two things, heard both ways?
I, I, some of the judges say, yes, we need to have it, some of them are not so sure because they think they're covered under other things.
Well, I think we need to get a clarification.
Right. I mean, it's a, it's a fairly large insurance policy.
So are the honest judges saying we need to have it for the dishonest ones? Or the dishonest ones trying to say they're honest?
I think it was brought up when Judge Brown was here, and he thought that they needed it, so we started paying, and we paid since then.
What would it be for?
It's a liability policy.
For what?
I'm assuming if they would get sued in their-
Okay, so then if they get sued, who would they sue? The state or the county?
I don't know.
That would be my question.
Pardon me, I forgot.
All right, have Jill find out for us.
We just need to get clarification before we-
From? Yeah, from who?
We got a county counselor.
Well, we can, we can, we can ask Jill-
Hey Jeff, can you find out for us?
But, I mean, we ought, we need to check with the state, probably, and see.
We got a counselor right there.
Well, I mean, we'll check with her too.
Yes. That's who should do all the checking then?
So, just to talk about, it's a, it's a sure that you continue to pay them.
Okay, so Jill should just check it out. Have Jill find out.
But whether you-
If we're required to have it.
Yes.
If it's gonna be a benefit to have it, if it's actually gonna protect us. I mean, wouldn't that make sense?
I should get a copy of the policy to, um, to the county.
We go, we see it.
Well, if the policy's saying it's gonna protect us if we're ever sued, but they can't sue us, they'd be suing the state, it doesn't make sense anyway.
Why?
So, I think it's a Jill question.
Yeah, well, well.
All right, Sam, you gonna talk to her and have her find out?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir. I will do that.
I'll pass that off on you pretty easily there. I enjoyed that.
So, we wanna do prosecutor?
Yeah.
Oh, God. Prosecutor.
Come on down to the table.
Just teasing Locke, how you doing?
Doing all right.
All right, what page are we on, Kristen?
Um, 76.
Just saves me from having to look it up. I can look it up.
I wanna give all my money to the sheriff. Okay, that's, sounds good.
76.
76.
You had a chance to see it?
I've had a chance to look over it a little bit, yeah, thank you.
I'll take it back.
We're going back to zero, we're just gonna start over?
Yeah, something, something like that.
All right.
So it's kind of your, your show, if there's something you want to talk about, or something that you want to change from what was proposed?
Sure. Um, I guess first, I know there was some talk, apparently, that, that, uh, there was a part-time investigator position that was supposed to go to, potentially go to full time, is that accurate? I mean, Mark's not letting me in the office, I don't, there's an awful lot I don't know at this point.
Your office, like, is January 1st.
Yeah.
Whatever you want.
So, I'll kind of give you that.
You don't have to have any investigators if you don't want.
Give you a little bit of background, the transfer in line in the estimated revenue?
Sure.
Um, that 102 is used to pay for a full-time attorney and a part-time investigator.
Okay.
Uh, it is an MOU between your office and the commission.
Okay.
That you will pay for that out of other funds besides general fund.
Sure.
I think right now it's coming out of the delinquent tax fund.
Okay.
Um, but, that is an agreement that's signed in the joint.
Okay.
So, it will not be included in the budget unless you sign some sort of MOU with the commission.
Okay.
And I think, I mean, you guys would let him structure that MOU, you don't have to use it for a part-time investigator.
Sure.
You don't have to use it for-
And I could, so I could use it for, say, if I wanted to increase salaries of a couple of other attorneys, is that?
So, in the past, we have not done salary supplements. We kind of did away with that, but-
Okay.
You guys just tell them-
F Ts or E Ts?
Yes, just to fund those.
Um, we made some adjustments, though, to the salaries, and got rid of the supplemental salary.
So, a couple years ago, we were paying some salary supplements, we finally incorporated those in and did away with all salary supplements through an MOU.
So, I guess what we need to know is, we need a plan from you on what you want to do and-
Sure.
-what it's gonna cost. And so, if that's, if that's salary adjustments, I mean-
At this point-
I'm just trying to look at the bottom line.
Sure. So, salary-wise, um, you know, I'll be honest, as I was kind of going through what, what the assistants were making under Mark, um, there are plenty of counties around the state that, that start their assistant prosecutors at about what, you know, the highest level assistant here was making. Uh, so, in order to see the changes I think we want to see as a county, we're, we're going to need to, um, do a little bit more in terms of salary for assistant prosecutors. I think in the long run, we will really see, you know, when it comes to prosecutors, you get what you pay for, and, you know, he was paying maybe mid-level at best. And, um, I think bringing in one or two high-end assistants, one or two mid-level, and then maybe making a couple of hires out of law school who I can pay on the lower end, we'll really see the changes we need to see. So, you know, you're talking about for a top-level assistant, probably in the 80 range, um, and I have spoken to another top-level assistant who's willing to come back on a part-time basis, so I could even eliminate one full-time position, make that a part-time position, pay out of that 102, um, add a couple more assistants, which if I could pay out of that 102 as well, to supplement their salary, we could potentially, you know, avoid having to pump more money in salary-wise there, um, and then making just, just a couple out-of-law school hires, maybe in the range of about 50 a year for an out-of-law school hire. For the mid-levels, probably between 60 to, to 70, tops on that.
So, without seeing who all you have in your office, and I don't wanna-
Sure.
I mean, I guess we could bring it up, but, um, anyway.
I mean, right now, I've got two confirmed to come on board, and those are the higher, higher-end assistants who would be doing that.
So, I guess maybe, I gave you a list of the current-
You did, yes, yes.
Um, maybe you need to take that spreadsheet and kind of submit to us, kind of, you don't have to put names in if you want to-
Sure, sure.
Kind of, the positions you're looking for and what you think you want to pay them, so we can kind of compare that to-
Okay.
-the total salary that's in there at the moment.
Sure.
And, um, maybe if you, are you still good with the 102 out of those funds, and then maybe we use that to supplement what you want to do?
Yeah, I would, I would be fine with using that 102 to, to supplement. I mean, I can pay the one part-time fully out of that without a problem, and then supplement a couple other salaries.
Well, I don't know that we would do supplements, but, you know, take the total and fund what we can, and then maybe that 102 is another assistant or a part-time attorney, a whole position, but-
Sure.
But we use it to get your plan done, so see if we can fit into the plan what we want to do.
Okay.
But, I kind of need to see on paper-
Sure, yeah, I'll-
-positions you're thinking and what you're thinking their pay should be.
Right.
To kind of see if we can fit that into the total budget as it is, or what we would need to add to get there.
All right, that works.
Yeah, we want to work with you as much as we can, so.
Yeah. Okay, I can get that to you by the end of the day, so.
Okay, so, we may talk about it tomorrow or Thursday again?
All right.
So, do you think you can work within that, that, um, salary line?
As it exists?
Yeah.
Um-
I mean, and I guess I kind of, is there, uh, is there something coming out of general to help offset some of this, or what?
What do you mean?
Well, so, he's got 903,000 in salaries, but he don't have 903,000 in revenue there.
Right, so he's funded from general fund, so-
That's what I mean.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's just like my budget, I don't bring in any revenue, I'm funded from the general fund, so property tax and things like that are used to offset the expenses of my office.
Okay.
Same thing works with the prosecutor's office.
So his total appropriation is 1.3.59 million, whatever is less his revenue is what we're putting in?
Right, right, so that million-dollar figure at the bottom, that net amount, is what general fund funds up his office.
Okay, a million four, or a million 1.04, 40, a million 40?
Yeah.
But he does have the other funds that are for him.
Yeah, so if he puts the page, he does have those other funds that are under his control, and that's where that 102 is currently coming from.
How much, uh, did you look into the prosecutor's office as far as the salary grid and any of that, or?
Um, so we did make some adjustments, it included in that 903 figure.
Okay, right, because for last year, it was like 80, 8 something, right?
Yes, so we can look at that when we look at salaries for everybody, but we did make some adjustments, but, um, from what I hear from him, that low end of, like, a prosecutor one is still a little low, so.
It's pretty, pretty low for-
You got a spreadsheet of all the employees that are encompassed in this fund?
Yeah.
Um, and I don't need their, I don't need their names, but just the title.
I've given, I've given it to him, so maybe he makes the updates to it that he wants to add to it, and then we can compare the two and see what we're at.
Okay.
Yeah, get that done.
That work?
Thanks.
That gonna work?
Any other questions or changes you want to-
Uh, no, I, I think really that was my main concern, was just, just getting the salaries I think we need to, to make the office run more efficiently, so.
If you're gonna come back and see us to fill out your minimum?
Yes, I will, absolutely.
Right back, right.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Get on, Debbie.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Sorry.
No, I do not.
Debbie, where's all the salaries at on, I got it on the budget F drive, right? Our commission's budget, or commission F drive? So, commission's budget, or is it in a separate one under yours?
Thanks, Kristen.
Yep.
See Locke, you'll learn, as long as these two are happy.
I know.
Commission's budget?
I promised not to kick her out of my office either.
See? I'm working on it, I'm gonna keep it.
We'll keep her. She's got a pretty nice office, though, so she might-
You need a vehicle too, don't you? Need a high pursuit vehicle?
Yeah, right, yeah, I need something like that.
I was gonna see what all, yeah.
Red Corvette.
Yeah. They're changing the body, next year, it's gonna be a mid, mid-engine, so this is the, this is the year that we need to get it, because it'll be worth more. It's a good investment.
Well, why don't you have Eric buy it, then?
Yeah. I suggest that, too.
Good investment. Are we gonna put it in bubble wrap and store it somewhere?
I'm gonna put it where the M wrap was, over there.
Oh, it'll get hit over there.
Do they?
Just like, just like the garage doors.
Did that M wrap ever get hit?
Garage doors got hit all the time.
What are they gonna do with that drone?
Oh, are we gonna keep it?
Uh, I don't know.
Okay, I think that's it for now.
Okay, thank you.
You mean a $15,000 drone?
I did not see the bids on it.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, no. You know.
Well, I don't think it falls within the purview of using it for prosecution.
Sheriff Wheeler!
So, where, where's everybody else?
You said not, that all you needed is one person.
One time you listened to us. Now I'm in shock, I won't be able to do this. You usually have like a little circus show coming in.
Posse.
Yeah, the posse had their party.
I'm not saying that they're not watching and will come over here if-
Oh, they're not watching, because we're not on.
As soon as I give the signal, I put my phone out.
Your bad signal.
Me and my phone out.
So, salary, 2018, all departments. Well, this one says 2018, I didn't see it a while ago, so I can use it. Oh, wait. It's thinking, it's thinking. Oh, no, these are pay forms. Never mind. Let me delete that.
You put your changes in writing?
Because I was opening the stuff, and I wanted to see what their, so this is-
Sticky note, does that count?
Six copies.
Six copies?
Man, people, he didn't listen at all.
Read his email.
Don't have any changes.
Oh, well.
Denied, next.
I have some concerns.
Did you hide it from somebody?
So, it's a prime, definitely, it's, yeah.
I was just looking at the old ones, the current.
Page where?
I'm on 97, I think.
What page are we on?
Page 97.
All right, I didn't trust Sam.
You wanna do capital first?
Uh, we can.
So, his list of capital on 96.
I didn't know if you were peeking and-
We, uh, to start out with, uh, we can stand with the budget that the auditor has, has put in, so we, we really don't have any changes. I have some concerns, I was gonna bring your attention, but I don't have, I don't have any changes. Um, a couple of the concerns were already brought up by Matt in his, and I told him I was gonna use his name, and he was not happy with me at all when I said that, so he said, "What for?", and then I hung up the phone, so, anyway. Uh, he brought up the stuff about the vacation, you know, we're the same boat we were, I don't know if you remember, about three and a half, four years ago, we had brought this up, we got guys on 10-hour shifts and 12-hour shifts, and the same thing, so. And then the other thing he brought up was radios. Uh, you'll notice in our capital improvements, we've been replacing four portables at a time, unfortunately, the, the money that we were using used to buy more radios, and they don't buy as much as they used to anymore with the money we're spending, so. Uh, I talked to Matt already, we're gonna wait until April and see if he gets his grant. If he does not get his grant, then we may come back to you guys and see if we can't do a, um, because if we go together and buy the radios we need, we can get a better deal, um, and try to go together and get some of the portables and just get them knocked out. It'd have to be contingency of funds, of course, uh, but then that would knock out my, the, the portable radio, uh, line item that I do every year for $20,000 in my capital improvements. Uh, the second problem is, is our mobiles in our vehicles right now, they're going on 13-years-old, 12-years-old, um, and, uh, they don't have, uh, they're not supported anymore. So, all of them are working, but this, not this year, but next year, uh, we're gonna start, uh, replacing, uh, the mobile radios, probably six at a time. The, the problem is they run about five grand apiece. So, this year, we only asked for $250,000 for vehicles, next year, it will probably be 280,000, because 30,000 will be just for the, the, uh, mobile radios, and we'll do that for the next, uh, we're not replacing all the mobiles in all of the cars, it'll be only for patrol division and civil, so.
So, right now, you're moving mobiles from the old car to the new one?
Yes, we're reusing them.
And then the next year, you want to replace them as you buy the vehicle, you're gonna replace it with a new?
Some of them, because, you know, it depends upon, I mean, we have an idea of the new vehicles, we usually buy around six new vehicles a year, um, six to eight. Uh, this year, I think we're at six, and I think we bought three used, but, uh, I, I don't want to sit and try to replace every one that, right now, because it would, it would just be too expensive. I mean, like I said, it's five grand extra every time we do it, and that's not including the programming, so, um, but that, we can make that work, that, that's not an issue. But, anyway, so the radios is an issue just like with EMS with us, and I just want you to be cognizant of it, that we probably will be coming to you, and, uh, because we have radios broke down, I don't know how many we have sitting in that shelf back there right now, but, I mean, I don't even want to program, I have to program them, I don't want to pay for programing them because we're having issues with them. So, I think that we can take those and sell them, uh, to someone that's not on most win, and it would, and it would be fine, because these, the radios we bought were just VHF radios, and they were upgradable for trunked systems, which is most win. Uh, well, they upgrade them all right, and they work most of the time, usually, so, uh, it's, it's just time for us to move past these, I mean, 11, 12-year-old portables that we have in mobiles, and try to, to move a little bit better. And what we'll do is, we'll take the new portables that we'll buy, give them to patrol division, and then take the, the old ones that is, the 7,000s you're using right now, and push them down to reserves and jail staff, and then get rid of all the 2,500s and 1,500s. And you all don't know what those are, but they're just radios, portables that we're getting rid of. But, I have no concerns with the, the current budget as it sits. I yield my time.
I obviously didn't cut it out out.
So, I, I didn't say I was happy with it, I said that I can live with it. But, you know, you and I, when I submitted that in, you and I worked on, I mean, this wasn't, this isn't that I submit it and then that's it, you just take and run with it, we worked on this, so.
So, desk computers, 30 to 35 for $28,000?
It depends upon, uh, whenever we go to buy them, it depends on how much money they're gonna be, I, I mean-
Well, how many are you gonna replace?
30 to 35, depending on how much they are, because that's how much money we have set in there. So, if they're, if they're, you know, uh, I don't remember how much we put down there per, but if it's 450 bucks and we just have to buy the, the standalone desktop or the, or the MDT, then we're fine, but if the, if we have to replace the desktop and the monitors, uh, then that's gonna be a little more expensive, so.
So, are you buying desk computers, or are you buying MDTs?
Uh, probably at least one MDT, and then the rest will be desktops.
So, tasers, is that just a partial of the tasers that you need, or?
Oh, yeah, that's, that's only, I think that's only three, they run about, or maybe at six, they're like 3,500, I think.
And then you, and then you buy the refillable cartridges out of something else?
Yeah, we'll buy it out of law enforcement supplies. But, but what they'll do is if they say at six, because again, these are numbers that we gave you in August whenever we put all this together. So if you, if you allot us the fifteen thousand dollars for tasers, then we'll go to them and find out what the, the going price is for these tasers. And if, if they come in at thirteen thousand, then I'll buy two thousand dollars worth of cartridges.
Okay, what's this paint interior?
Um, and that was a guess too, um, you, if you've been down in our jail, you'll see that there's, it's really starting to show wear and tear, not only in the jail, but in our facility. And so it's time that we start thinking about, um, not painting the whole thing, I think, but we start painting different sections of it to try to keep it, to try to keep it up to par. I, I have absolutely no idea how much money to put down for that.
Okay.
We had, um, the guy that came and painted, we had him to, to give us a bid and I don't have it with me, but he bid like fourteen grand or something for just the jail. And so, uh, I, I put fifteen thousand dollars down there and then I figured we'd contract it to, for whoever we can get to do it, so.
Okay, body cameras?
Body cameras, the problem we have right now is we have forty, we bought forty-five cameras, uh, we only have thirty-seven right now because they're breaking down. Um, and these, you gotta remember, these are about five years old, six years old now. And, uh, the company will replace them, but if you replace them now, you have to pay an extra ten dollars per month, per unit. And so we went, before I put the forty-five grand on there, I wanted to make sure that that was gonna be enough for us to purchase these. So we, uh, we didn't go out to bid, but we went and started looking at different ones. Uh, forty-five thousand is a pretty good number, I think we can get them all for probably forty, but, but I don't know that for sure until we go out to bid. Uh, but, uh, the company worth now, Wolfcom, was a lot more than forty-five, they're one of the most expensive ones out there now, so. We'll, we'll probably go away from them, put the new ones in patrol division and civil, and then push the older ones while they still work down into the jail and have jail staff start wearing them.
Is there a reason why jail, why jail staff would need to wear cameras when we got cameras all over the jail?
Because there's no sound, so you can't hear what's going on and plus there, there are a lot of, uh, blank spots where the camera systems are where the, it doesn't pick up. And we were gonna revisit that with, uh, the camera system in the jail whenever we did the build out from downstairs. When we do that project, we would look at getting some different cameras up there that would give us better coverage.
Is there any, um, data out there on those now that, uh, show that good, bad, indifferent?
For the body cameras?
Yes.
Yes, there's a lot of data now because there's a lot of agencies using them.
So what about all the storage of all that data?
That's the other thing we're looking at, so there's a couple of ways to do it, we can do the cloud-based stuff, uh, and you can also do the server. Right now, we have a server that collects all that information, uh, and we would probably look, and it's cheaper if you do the server because it, uh, because we've already bought the server, it's ours, so we don't have to rent it out. If you go to the cloud base and you have to rent that from them, that's part of this, that's part of the, uh, the price.
Was that one of the twenty thousand dollar servers that we spent?
Fifteen, yeah, fifteen-five or whatever it was.
Okay. What about this weapons modification standardization?
Well, it's, uh, before we do there, the anti-slip, uh, paint.
Kinda gathered what that was.
Yeah, well, and, and I thought you'd wanna know, you didn't ask about the ten grand and, uh, the, the number we got that is, is because, uh, uh, Morgan County just went through this and it cost them about ten thousand, so that's how we knew, that's why I put that number, I don't know if that's gonna be close. Uh, weapons modification, we have a lot of different rifles out there that have, that are not the same, um, so we're trying to modify them to be on the, the, uh, the same base. So that way, uh, when we're doing our training, it's, it's consistent and the continuity of training is the same all the way across the board. So there's a, a lot of different, uh, part now, we, I've sent people to class to be arms, uh, their arms, uh, I can't think of any of it right now. They can work on the guns legally, so, uh, and they've been trained on it, so they can go in and work on these weapons for the, uh, the AR fifteens, the, uh, the shotguns and the pistols.
Okay. Obviously, the MEAC repairs, that's just a number you put in there for miscellaneous?
Yeah, and, you know, and this was the one that, this was the number that I put down, I had it in a contingency and Kristen said no. And so I put it in here because she said to do that, uh, but it's just a, it, it's just a, uh, to put it there in case something happens with the MEAC. Because it's such a vital and we utilize it quite a bit and it's just a matter of time before that thing. I mean, well, we just had to replace computers in it, so I mean, it's, it's just a matter of time, so I just, and, and we may not spend that fifteen grand. It may just sit there and roll over to next year, but if something was to pop up that was, um, expensive, uh, we'd be able to utilize that fifteen thousand dollars and continue to, to operate with that.
Do we have all those fancy rams for our armored vehicle like with the Houston Columbia?
I do, I have one and we put the bat symbol on it, so when we hit a door, it'll have a bat symbol after we get done. No, it didn't, we didn't do that, it's a smiley face.
You got to put ink on it or is it just go on?
No, no, it didn't dent.
I shouldn't encourage you to.
Well, usually, it's usually you and I going back and forth, so it's a little bit weird.
To say, uh, you know, in operation was sure lots of rough, so boy, they have to bring somebody like Chris in the.
Yeah.
Free, you know.
And then we get to pay for it. There you go.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah. We coming out of your.
Is this mine?
That letter that Max sent down about the.
The twelve. And I, I talked to Richard Lee, he says y'all will sit down and, and figure out how much the supervision cost versus the.
We tried to come up with a number, so we have an estimate at the moment.
That's a good number. I mean, I think it's realistic. Now if we can get them to go.
Richard's working on a proposal, he's hoping at the end of the week they'll have something.
He's working on a proposal right now and then, uh, I think Donnell just sent him, uh, some of the figures for some of the people that he's had. And then she's gonna take those numbers and then, uh, his numbers and my numbers and then submit them for the first time and see where we're at.
So this inmate commissary in, uh, seven oh four. I mean, it's quite a jump from.
Revenue?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, that's due to the vending machine.
And we think we're gonna get fifty thousand out of that?
We just jumped, we just went up twenty grand, wasn't it twenty?
What are you at right now, David? Because he was at thirty-eight as a, we printed this. We are now at seven oh four revenue. Sorry, is that fifty thousand right now?
Okay.
So I'm, I think he's a good number.
So is, uh, is your half of the nine-one-one going up? Like that one up a little bit?
Uh, so the total for nine-one-one, the twenty-five percent did go up slightly, so his half, the EMS is half both increased so.
The, uh, and the, and she brought up a good point on the commissary and, uh, we haven't had those vending machines a year yet, full year, so fifty thousand's a really good number, I think it, it should go up higher.
Yeah, I think it could go up a little higher, but we'll see where it ends here.
Fifty-five eight.
Well, you said your fleet's pretty bland, so the vending machines are actually.
Well, uh, I pull a meal about once a month and, uh, I, I have them, I don't tell them, I just call down and say, "Send me a meal up", so they, they brought one up to me. This time, uh, John beat them, uh, so he was in my office, so I got two. And, uh, we had a, it, it was a, it's, I've had worse in the military, um, but it, it wasn't bad, it's very bland, um, and it's soy-based, a lot of it is. Um, and then we went down to Coffee Zone, but. For coffee and cheesecake, as far as y'all know. Uh, but it's not, it's not bad food, if you would like sometime, I'd be happy to pull one for you guys too, you can come over and I'll feed you lunch. But it's really not, it's not bad, everyone that leaves my facility, or the majority of everyone leaves my facility, has gained weight. Of course, there's.
But the vending machines actually just give them a little bit of comfort food.
And that's only in the.
Can they get soda or? No, I'm sorry.
So, and that's the stuff that they can get, uh, only in the, uh, low-risk pot, you, it's only available in one pot.
I found out he doesn't even do coffee, so I don't ever wanna be over.
No, no, we don't do anything caffeinated.
I don't ever wanna be over there if I can't have my coffee.
Yeah, but, now they can buy caffeinated products from, they can buy coffee, freeze-dried coffee from, yeah, mix it with water.
But it's not hot, you can't heat it, you can't heat it.
Yeah, but I've, I've drank coffee that way too, so. Take a taste.
So, um, obviously under seven oh one administration, um, work comp, is that just for the administrative division?
Yes, they're divided, so each department has a salary line and the, for her compensation is just for that department.
Is that prorated based on accidents, any of that, or just prorated?
Exactly, the audit is over.
Yeah.
And it's based on the, uh, salaries for those positions and the grade, and it's already, and it's figured into the premium, so yeah, that would be the end.
So it's based on the people that are in that department and their salary?
Again, what you're saying, it's not prorated per how many accidents that we have in the share versus across the county.
Wouldn't that be affected by their, uh, classification?
Yeah, their rate charges.
Right?
Yeah.
I mean, so based on their losses, their classification would either be higher or lower, um, based on those job duties? Do we break it out like that?
It's broken out by title.
Is it? Okay.
I didn't think about that. How you did it, I didn't care, it was magic, I opened it up and it's there.
I mean, in meetings, travels induced, John, looks like that's about double what it was last year.
Well, we're, we've increased our training, um, you know, with the environment that we have right now and, and you'll notice, there's a couple of things that we've increased quite a bit. Training is one of them and you'll see the ammunition, we've increased quite a bit. Um, there's a couple of reasons for the ammunition, one is, of course, we've increased our, our qualifications, uh, we've increased our, our range time. But also, since we're sending people to, uh, LETI, uh, we have to send a certain amount with them whenever we send them to get certified.
Are you going through that much ammo when you're training or what?
Oh yeah, oh yeah, you figure every one of my, every one of my staff that are, are gun shooters have to, have to, uh, use their weapon. Well, and some of it.
Airsoft.
Well, some of it is qualification, we'll qualify twice a year, but we go out four times a year. Some of it is familiarization, just like we just had shoot, no shoot in, uh, in, uh, low light. So that means, uh, there was no exact qualification for that, you had to go out and you had to perform the function. Uh, but like, the next time we go out, it'll be a qualification, so they'll have a, they'll actually have a call that they'll have to pass or else bad things happen.
Uniforms?
Uniforms up went, uh, I think they went up just a little bit, uh, we changed our uniforms. The problem we're having is, uh, is finding a vendor, uh, that can either stay in business or be able to get us the, 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 the uniform. So this shirt that I'm wearing right now is one of the newer ones that we just got, uh, they're Elbico, that we're getting them through, um, St. Louis, I can't think of the name of the place, uh, Leon's.
Leon.
Oh, it's the same place.
Uh, that's who, that's who won the, the bid, so, uh, that's where we're getting the shirts from right now. We are looking at probably doing something different with coats, but that's a, um, that's a long process. Because we'll get two or three in for T and E and we'll have people wear them and see how the wear and tear goes. So it, it'll be about a, uh, that'll be about a six or seven month process.
So I do see, uh, fifty thousand for pre-trial?
It is, yeah, we agreed that whenever, uh, whenever I got done doing my, uh, the, uh, budget, we included eighty thousand dollars in there. Fifty for pre-trial release and then thirty thousand for a IT person to help, to pay half of a person for Brian. And I, I would assume you guys are moving forward with that, he, he does a, he does a phenomenal job.
Butt kisser.
He does, he does a good job.
We haven't said yes or no.
Yeah, he gets shirts and all kinds of stuff from you, man.
He got a car, we gave him a car, so.
He just got thirty grand from John.
Yeah, no.
If, if we allow it.
If you allow it. Thirty grand on what?
For a new person.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah. Yeah, but if, uh, yeah.
He's going to Coffee Zone and eating pie with you and putting somebody else to work.
You know, I don't think I've ever seen him in Coffee Zone.
But, yeah, he's working all the time.
Yeah, that's right, that's where, yeah, but it's a problem, he's over the health department too much, we gotta do something like that.
Wife's there.
It, uh, I, I'm not sure when, I mean, we're moving forward, I know we're moving that stuff over there, so, um, if we get someone in there to help Brian out to do with some of the smaller functions so he can deal with the bigger networking and stuff.
How come our, uh, fuels up so much, uh, in, uh, support services?
Uh, we, I know we put another, we, we put another person on the road on trying to deliver papers, if you'll, if you remember on the commission reports.
Your SROs.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
And we moved the SROs too, so the SROs were under administration and we moved them over to, uh, last year, we moved them over into that division, over to the support services division. But we missed moving the fuel line over for them, uh, so we didn't just fuel it, so it's bigger now.
Okay. So you moved them kinda from one department to another department?
Yeah.
We didn't pick up the fuel and move.
Yeah, we just didn't move the fuel, all the fuel, and we moved the mu- fuel over there during the year.
So then there'll be some offset on, what, what department were they in?
They were in seven oh one.
In admin.
Admin.
So you see the seventeen activity of fuel in admin was like ten thousand dollars and it dropped to five.
Okay. Anything else looks pretty well in line to me, so. You guys got any questions?
No.
Tired of me asking questions. Just figured maybe we wouldn't have to have John come back.
You just agree right now and we wouldn't have to, we wouldn't have to come back?
No.
It's worth a shot. Worth a shot, Chris.
Nope, appreciate it, I don't have anything right now, so, anyway, as we dive into it, we'll let you know when we're talking about you again.
Yep, appreciate it.
We'll reach up then.
Bring pie.
Yeah.
One of those French silks would be good.
Nothing furry.
Peanut butter, French silk?
Nothing furry.
Yeah. Alright, see you guys later.
By golly, Donnell's right after John Wheeler.
Sixty-three, the book of Job.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Howdy, howdy.
He's still on sound, right?
Good.
In fact, I think I'm going, getting sick again, I haven't got my voice back from last.
Yeah, when you were down at the lake, you were like that, and that's been two weeks ago.
I woke up a little over a lot this morning.
See you, John.
I'll try to stay away, but don't drink after me, okay? Hello.
Scott.
Well, I don't have much, um, this capital, I, I just got a question, um, probably more for Chris than anybody. Um, capital outlay, I have a, um, a request in there for nine thousand, what do I have to do for that? What, what?
So, so it is, for nine thousand, it's back here in, uh, page one eleven.
Page one eleven, cool.
Look at the request, um, right now, we have our portion of their computers, because we have not paid that out yet, I know you guys have received those computers. We have paid our portion, so it's listed back here as well. But then you have your FTR machine and.
Yeah.
Software licenses, so I think those two add together would be nine.
Okay, yeah.
So it's kind of a, most of the time, the process is, you kind of come to the commission, say, "I'd like to purchase this, can I go out to bid?" Or if it's a sole source or cooperative agreement, present that to them, you guys then give her permission to purchase that from capital improvement.
Okay, so I've already got, I think they say that these are gonna be replaced by March, so I've got the information here that says they have to be. So I just need to come back next year, so.
So how do you guys want her to do that, she already has?
I've got the expenses listed of how much it's gonna cost us, so I know exactly how much it's gonna cost us for the, um, what they call the FTR machines. That's where we keep all of the, uh, sound recorded, so municipal, I'm, I'm sorry, associate division doesn't have a court reporter, but we still have, we're a court of records, so we have to have, um, machines that we can do sound recording on. So these are sound recording machines that we have three of them and they need to be replaced because of the windows, I think, right? So, um, the windows issue, so it's gonna cost us, I think, what do you say? Thirty-six plus the fifty-four, so yeah, that's another thousand dollars, basically.
So the software is part of that?
Yeah, it's all part of the same thing, but it's software for the machines.
So, and then that has to be, like, I have to.
The nine thousand, so that's thirty-six for the machine.
Yeah.
And then the software, it goes on the machine.
Okay.
As long as it's listed here, I mean, we'll take a look at approving that, all that later, I guess.
Well, do you all need the information, do they get that information?
So do you want that information now, is what she's asking, she has the quote and stuff.
The quote, so you can see it, because what happens is like, I have to have it installed by March, so that means by mid-January, I'm gonna need to purchase that so that they can go to ASCA, so that they can be built and then installed in March.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to know what, what we're talking about here, so, I mean, FTR doesn't tell, tell me a whole lot.
Quotes from state contracts, or state information.
Is it sole source, Donna?
Yeah, I guess it's all on state contract, that's, to go to see, uh, they changed to S H I.
So it's a cooperative purchase? And it's the recording machines in the courtrooms when the court reporters are not required, so they have to report. So, they have to report and transcript of the hearing or whatever?
So, what's?
Twenty-one five. Twenty-one five, is that what the price is on there?
So, the FTR machines are twelve hundred dollars apiece?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, three hundred, three of them?
Thirty-six hundred dollars for that.
Thirty-six hundred dollars.
And then fifty-four for the license. OSC.
The license, software license for the FTR machines?
Yes.
So, that's actually three of those, two, one, two, two.
So, what, what is?
Because they give us one.
So, they give us?
OSC has given us one license, so we have to pay, since we got three machines that need to be replaced.
It's two licenses, three FTR machines?
Yeah.
And the FTR machine is just a?
It's a computer that will hold, um, yeah, audio. Sorry, I'm just not feeling very good.
For the record. That's what it stands for, FTR, for the record.
If we want to see one, we can come over, and Chris could show us one, right?
Yeah, yeah.
There you go. We could have one right here, twelve hundred bucks.
You got, you got, we don't do our own transcripts. We send those off, so then OSC comes into our computer and pulls that audio off and does a transcript.
It's just late in the night, Donnell.
But we have to have those. I mean, it's part of the record. You can't just not record your hearings.
I got one of them here, too. Those are a thousand bucks. I'll pay Fred, too.
Okay.
Twelve hundred plus twenty-seven for the license.
So, is that it?
I'm not going to ask any more questions. I asked if I'm good on those.
Otherwise, you're good, right?
Otherwise, I'm pretty good, yeah. I think I'd be okay. I just definitely going to need the money for the FTR machines. Because we're, we're required to keep those permanent. Those are permanent records, so.
So, who requires you? The state? So, they should pay for it.
The state? How about state statutes require it?
State statute requires it, which is the state.
Which you have fallen as well, right?
It's a, it's a.
Unfunded mandate.
You all want to have a court, so, right? I mean, we could stop, I guess we could stop just doing court altogether.
We can ship all the courts away, as far as I'm concerned.
And then where would your revenue from the courts come from?
Oh, we get all kinds of revenue from the courts.
I mean, we're giving you quite a bit of revenue that's not counted on that. Would you like to go over that? I got it.
Would you like to go over the utility bills for the courthouse every one?
Well, let me just say how much.
I'm just saying, too, how much, let's see, how much are our marshals?
Last year, in sheriffs, we collected for the sheriff, for board bill, sheriff's fee, and dispersed to the county over three hundred thousand dollars. Fines, invoice collected and distributed to the county was close to two hundred thousand. Bond forfeitures was forty-one thousand. And those are just three different revenue sources that go to you. That's counted on somebody else's budget, not mine.
Thank you.
We just give you the prisoners back, and you can keep the three forty-one.
But apparently, you're making money on that, isn't it?
We're losing our ass on that.
Oh, you should. We're making money on that.
Well, we're, we're holding federal prisoners, but you can have all the ones that are on state charges or whatever.
Well, that's not me. That's the prosecutor.
Are the ones just sitting over there. I, that three forty-one, tough change.
Again.
I can fill them up with federal prisoners and get another one point five million.
I don't go over budget, so. I'm just asking if I can get that approved. When, or when do you want me to come back and ask again for it, because I'm going to have to?
After the budget's approved.
Wait till we say no first.
When does, when does the project get approved?
June eighth, June eighth, yeah, eighth or ninth.
Is that going to be soon enough? Will that be soon enough?
Yeah. Yeah, that, I think as long as I can get it done by mid-January.
We'll be talking about it before then, though, so.
Right.
Yeah.
But it won't officially be approved till after the first.
Okay.
What'd you say, the eighth?
Whatever that Tuesday is.
You were among all those doctors last night at Cap, at Capitol Plaza.
Oh, they're radiologists. They're not, they're not generals.
Hey, Debbie, that invoice from, for Fred Weber, was that for pipe?
They did. That's what I'm saying. I have not paid a bill for any laptops.
Was that all of it, or do you know?
Oh, you haven't? I think they've got them.
That pipe for out there at Public Works was thirty-three, seven.
Is that it?
Concrete pipe for that lot.
Hmm, okay.
We said that we'd buy.
Because we got the laptops for the pre-trial services? I didn't get a bill for those. And I didn't get a bill for the, and I didn't get a bill for the sheriff, for the court reporters ones either. They said we're up to date, so I'm not going to ask again.
Thanks, Donnell. Get better.
Does anyone know anything about this, uh, travel demand model envisioning consultant services contract through STBG?
That would probably be the port.
No. This is a, uh, this is Cole County matching funds for the travel demand model envisioning consultant services contract. This project used STBG funds. Total project was a hundred and forty-nine thousand. Twenty percent local match, seventy-five percent paid by Jefferson City, twenty-five percent by Cole County. A stipulation in the Campo MOU.
Is that, uh, bike study?
Says travel demand model.
That'd have been something we all would have had to approve, though.
I don't, I remember talking about that.
No, no, no.
But it was, looked like it ran through Campo.
Seventy-five, twenty-five.
Paying a bill for twenty-five hundred dollars.
Look it up.
You don't remember any of that?
I just did. I was.
Who's that? So, what do we got left here?
Assessor and recorder, and then I don't know that Mark's coming.
I sent him an email, but I never heard back. Alvin.
Hello, Alvin. Did you get an answer the other day about the attorney bills? Where are we, where are we at with that? That's the one where we gave him an up to but not exceeding amount, and he had pretty much already exceeded that amount, so. Okay, so what are we waiting on for it, then?
You guys took her contract.
Is it on the agenda?
Well, we talked about it once, and you guys asked Jill to get an update for you, and we haven't talked about it since.
I've sent quite a bit of information about it.
We had talked at one point about not approving a contract.
But my issue is, the work's already been done. The invoice is there. How can we not pay that?
Because he did work outside the contract.
I'm just going to play devil's advocate on it. It's exactly what Chris said, because the contract said up to and not exceeding this amount. But I, I'll also say, we have to, I think we got to keep pushing this until it's over.
But I do believe on him. Chris did the contract. He didn't consider the invoices that were outstanding.
Correct.
The big part why we still have invoices and don't have any by now.
Don't you think that since he knew how much he had outstanding, I don't know.
So, what's the difference again?
I would think he should have known.
I've only met him once, but I just want the man.
Yeah.
I just.
I've talked to him once on the phone, and he's really not all there. For being a lawyer, he's.
My concern is that the bulk of what we have paid on the Amber case has gone to him, not to the actual attorneys. If you compare what we've spent, I mean, the bulk of the cost has been for him, and I understand that he's an expert witness, but it seems like the costs keep going up and up for his services, which you would think at this point for the thirteen cases, that most of his work would be done.
Yeah, that's what we were kind of led to believe.
I think I sent an email where it showed that we spent less this year than we have in the past years. On sense.
So, how much over the forty thousand are we?
Sixty?
Have them listed.
Sixty thousand?
Another sixty is what he needs?
Well, we owe him fifty-four right now. Fifty-four thousand, five seventy-one.
And we've already paid at least forty?
This year?
I think it was closer to fifty. Could be wrong.
Well, I think the first two of the year were on last year's contract that didn't get paid until after they ended here. So, they were in last year's agreement. This year's agreement was forty-five, but I don't think we've paid out the whole forty-five yet, because we don't have enough to pay the next invoice.
We were, I think it was like a thousand, maybe two thousand.
So, we have forty-five allocated for this year?
We had forty-five, but we've paid out at least forty of it, I think, already.
But that was that last, was that part of that money we had allocated last, for last?
So, there were two invoices this beginning of the year that lapsed over from the previous year. They got paid on last year's PO. That PO was then closed down. We signed a new agreement for forty-five, I think. That forty-five PO has been paid out up to, I think, almost forty thousand, but we don't have enough in there to pay the next invoice that he submitted.
Saying the five thousand and say this is always head.
And she's up to fifty-four thousand on top of that.
Okay, we need to have another meeting and talk about this, outside of budget.
So.
But, I mean, we can talk about it now if you want. Huh?
So, what do you want to do Thursday morning?
It's fine.
Because we need to get it taken care of, because four out, he sent an email to us for a while with it.
Thursday morning at night?
Yeah, I mean, we need to have a serious discussion, and then we need to.
Can we do eight?
We started it up, no, we Thursday morning?
Yeah. Then we need to see if we want to.
We're losing like two hours of good work time there.
I have plenty of work to keep me busy from six in the morning until nine.
Maybe something we want to go back and talk to the other parties involved.
So, did you guys get an update on the case or anything from John Ruth?
Jill sent us a brief.
Yeah, the briefing was, um, state, yeah, yeah.
I remember that briefing.
Yeah. State Tax Commission has till sometime after first year, then they can appeal that.
Appeal can take a few years.
Then they, then they have to rehear it, or when they can.
I just feel that we're fighting for the schools, and I think if the schools want to continue this, then they need to step forward and put some money into this also.
Yeah, Chris mentioned that. We need to bring that back up and see where we're going to go with it. But on the other hand, too, I mean, it's the county's job to make sure that the assessments are upheld, so.
To, to a cer-
So, how do you want to look at it?
To a certain extent, but I mean, when you look at the, the fair share of whose dollar, who's going to lose the dollars, I mean, they're going to lose, they stand to lose a ton. We stand to lose very little.
But that wouldn't be a reason not to fight it, because if we don't have good assessments in there, we're going to lose money on other things. We're going to, next thing you know, we're going to have the residents coming in arguing.
Well, that's, that's very true, but, uh.
I'm just arguing both sides of it, so. I, I agree with you. I think we need to get all the parties to the table and have another discussion.
Yeah, I think we need to see if they want to continue.
No, we can't. I absolutely don't think we can stop.
Cape Girardeau County, the school district's footing the whole bill. So, they aren't paying a, they aren't paying a dime. So, I'm not sure that that's right either, but anyway.
Yeah, I think there's a happy medium in there, so.
Anyway.
All right. What do we have now?
What page is?
I forgot you though.
Ninety-three, I think.
Ninety-four.
Ninety-four point three.
Okay.
Okay, Alvin, what do you got?
I, everything on here looks good to me, but I do need to, this was pointed out to me earlier, that we probably need to put something in there for part-time, because we are going to need some part-time help this, in nineteen, and we don't have anything in the budget for that.
Okay. Is this going to be for the DevNet conversion?
Yes. Also, when I retire, if I get to retire.
You don't get to?
No.
I would like to come back and work part-time.
Okay.
And I guess that needs to be put on in the budget also.
Okay.
Well, when you retire four years, we'll put it in.
So, in the, uh, in the meeting that we had with DevNet, um, obviously, I think we're going to need some part-time people, but I haven't seen a proposal from Brandon, um, yet, on, on doing some data entry. And he kind of indicated there was maybe a number to, so much per record or whatever to enter some of this stuff. And so, there may be an opportunity to utilize some of that.
So, I have a question. Are they going to provide that service that we're going to contract with them to do it, or we are going to hire outside people to data entry things?
So, obviously, we could do either or, I think. So, just in talks with them, no commitments. But, um, the concern was, is if we had people that did it, we'd have to train them how to do it, and then how accurate would that be?
Well, sure.
If they did it, then it just seemed to me like it would be better for them to do it, and us not have to make sure that the record was accurate.
So, I guess that, that's the difference, then, is if we put in part-time, it would be us hiring part-time people to data entry. If you're talking about contracting, I would think that would be more of a professional service or programming cost for implementation of the software.
Right.
So, we kind of need to decide or differentiate which way we're going to, as far as where it would go with the budget.
Well, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but, I mean, I think it's some of both. I think we're going to have to have some part-time. I don't know what that number is, and Alvin may have a better idea. If we were to contract with DevNet to do some of that, I think that would be a fee paid out of the assessment fund for contract services.
Okay.
That's how I see it, but I don't, I mean.
So, we know what, how long, how long's it going to take to?
Well, so, just, I mean, I'll go over some of that. So, obviously, if DevNet did it, we could, I don't know, we were talking, what, five thousand records or twenty-five hundred records or something?
That was only for commercial.
Right.
Thirty, thirty-seven thousand for residential.
Right.
Yes. But we don't know how many of those are going to have to be entered.
Right. So, I think we were looking primarily at the commercial the other day, is what we were talking about, and so.
And that was about three thousand.
Yeah. So, anyway, the nice thing about them is we could actually, um, scan or send them electronically so many records, and they could get those done, and then do it like a batch at a time, whether it be five hundred records or, or a couple hundred records, and he thought, yeah.
Well, that'd be, yeah.
He thought they could do, oh, I don't want to speak for him, a couple hundred records a week or something, once they kind of got going.
I think that's their, their, what they were thinking, plus they gave us a figure of what each one was, which I thought was very cheap, so I don't.
Right. Well, that's what they, that's what they had done. He, he gave us a range, and so, I mean, which we haven't ever heard back, so.
Says for broadcasting, you don't want to tell them it's too cheap.
But you can tell somebody they don't like them on here, it's fine.
Cheap's not the word I should use.
Do they guarantee, some sort of guarantee of accuracy of their information there, if any, then?
Somehow, I think they can. I.
I think we are still going to have to go over some of it, you know, like, take one or two out of a batch and just check it to make sure that, yes, that what they're entering is correct.
So, yeah, I think we need to kind of separate out the due. So, yeah, I think we need to kind of separate out the two, two items. So one would be what do we need to put in part-time for someone like Alvin or someone part-time in the Census Office? If we need some data entry people as well to work part-time versus what the piece is for the, just the data conversion? That would be hopefully one year or whatever to get us where we need to be.
So not sure where the data entry number, I mean, I, I can get you a number, but I mean, um, obviously, if we have to do personal property and we have to do some of the other stuff, maybe some of that part-time could be offset by something that they could do. But anyway, so I mean, I think it's gonna be a little bit of a guess as to what, what we're gonna spend. But I mean, I could get you something probably close.
Seven dollars was the top of the range?
I thought it was, I thought it was like two, two fifty to five dollars a record-
Two hundred and five, okay.
On three thousand records. That was just on the commercial side, though.
Yes. But that is the most difficult one anyway. It's going to take the most-
They all have to be manually entered. So the residential side would just be kinda, I don't know. I guess they're gonna have a batch that didn't come through or something, and so, but that's probably something better suited for in-house.
Yes, I think so.
So maybe you guys work together and try to come up with an estimate?
Can you maybe give me an idea of how many hours of part-time? I mean, if it's several people or whatever, and we can kinda come up with a-
I'll try to come up with something.
How's Chris doing?
I guess. Um, I just spoke with him before I came here. They're not going to be able to do the next surgery until they do knee surgery, and they don't know when they're gonna do the knee surgery at this point. He's still looking for a doctor to take care of something.
Okay. Sheriff stay with us till-
Till she's had enough.
Yeah, when she says she wants to go part- Yeah, no, we appreciate.
My plan is to stay till the end of June. I may stay till the end of July, depending on how the conversion goes. But I would like to take some time off after that. And then come back, part-time, and no responsibilities.
Good luck with that.
So something else that came up kind of after the budget would, in talking about the conversion, is maybe some additional training for the staff on DevNet. Uh, so we were talking about, I think, three thousand dollars maybe-
Yeah.
Uh, that we add to their programming line or direct training with DevNet, like one-on-one?
Okay.
That's not currently in the budget. Programming, that's where the DevNet contract is right now. So is that any cost, maybe an additional three thousand to do some? And while we're talking about training, I kinda brought this up a while ago. I do know that this year we've spent quite a bit on meetings, travels, and dues. Um, and part of that has been to get some certifications for current employees. We did go through the entire process with the previous employee and paid thirty-five hundred to four thousand dollars probably to get him fully trained and certified. He then left probably within a week or two of completing that certification to take a job somewhere else. And we're in the process of kind of doing the same thing with another employee at the moment. Um, I think that we need to have a conversation about if we're going to pay for someone to get this certification, that, uh, maybe we require a certain amount of time that they have to stay with the county after they receive that certification, or they need to pay for the certification themselves.
Well, I agree.
I mean, it's a lar, it's a large amount of money to pay to get someone just certified, and then for them to be able to leave and go use that certification somewhere else.
And that's why we're over budget at this point.
Yeah.
But it's not that.
Maybe we have Jill look at, look at that or something, or write something up, or?
I, I think we should. Yeah, so I think another question to Jill is whether or not we're already in the process with a current employee, if we can still have them sign that? Or if we're kind of out of luck with the one that's already in the process, and it's something we need to implement going forward? I don't know.
I think we, I think it is county policy or something.
So we did have a previous education policy that we did away with.
It got too expensive and wasn't really beneficial, because people were leaving.
Right.
Even though we had a clause, it found a way around.
Okay.
Well, then don't do it the same.
No.
Then don't do it the same.
See if there's another way of doing that, being able to recoup our, some of our costs.
Sam, where are you going to go?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, yeah, that's what I'm making.
You have a whole list for her, do you?
Yep.
I think that's all I have.
Okay.
Did you send a note about getting the San Souci bill on the agenda?
I did not.
You did? Okay, cause I saw something come through for the next agenda.
Thanks, Alvin.
Thank you, appreciate everything you're doing.
Thank you, Barry.
That's the Larry Vincent was supposed to been here at one fifteen, so I'm sure that's not what he's-
I was just here to give Alvin some moral support. Make sure y'all didn't cheat her like you do me every-
Wow. Hey. He's, he's on the club then. One more bourbon for Larry.
What page is his on? Let's, I wanna relook, I wanna revisit, I just wanna leave a note.
Let's give him a different office.
Well, yeah, we keep, when I was talking last night with-
Fourth floor, the courthouse?
With Mark Allen, or he was, he was mentioning maybe he would be a good Siberian Alex.
Well, you're not cruel.
Let's see, what do we have?
Go, better go check on taxes, make sure you did your taxes. Have a few cars to, you can put some of our cars on there.
Larry Allen Vincent. All right, here we go.
Anybody else?
Judy's coming, okay.
Possibly Mark, or?
Um, I have not heard anything from Mark, so.
I said, like I said, I sent him an email and never heard back, so.
Can we take fifteen minutes?
Yeah, someone-
Yeah, we're just recording, so, yeah.
I can go try to call Mark if you want.
I just, I just leave it on.
I mean, I, yeah, can we go try to give him a call?
Yeah, just see if he's coming or not. Looked like, uh, both those, uh, at Crossroads and, uh, that Idlewood job that Stockman's doing, looks like both of those are gonna overrun just a little bit. So had some subgrade issues on both.
Did you write down the ranges on the salaries that the prosecutor-
I trust Stockman with a lot more than I do any other ones on mail.
Yeah, I mean, you know, that one, I don't know, that one that, uh, Baker was doing, they just, they kinda had a place that was shady and down the hole, and they couldn't get it to dry. And I was like, I just told Eric, I was like, dig it out, put some shot rock in there and stabilize it, see if you can get that black base down. I said, it, it's too late in the year to be worried about it, get it done.
Yeah, I don't know if it ever would've dried out, but really, I mean, even in the summertime, about the time it dries out, you get rain.
Yeah.
It's way to go. So really, that's what you need, something that is gonna drain.
Mm-hmm, yeah. So anyway, but they finally did get all that black base down, huh?
I heard what you said.
About what? Comments about it?
Yeah, he's coming.
Is he?
He just called him.
Yeah, I sent him an email.
Sixty-one, seven, seventy-seven, but he has someone in child support that is seventy-
But he wanted to know when the other child was-
So sixty-one to seventy-four, is kind of the topic at the moment.
Debbie would be able to find out, because-
Yes, Mark will be down in a minute. First I got whoever answered, and I said, obviously, you wanna come down? And she said, yeah, he'll be down in a minute.
I was telling Jeff that there's two road projects that we're doing. We'll go over just cause we had subgrade issues on both.
Very few things were coming on here.
Yeah, we had pretty good luck with a lot of things.
While we're waiting, it's a batch, so.
You know, the important people have given half hour.
It's on, on significance, we only got fifteen minutes. How much time do you get?
Well, I got to say fifteen, thank you.
You got fifteen, okay.
I didn't take any of it. They know how grateful I am for the-
Does the commission provide snacks or anything to us?
For my budget every year.
Snacks.
You gonna have snacks or anything for us?
You want, you want Jeff's, I got Jeff's, uh- You know, this has been here for a long time, though, so.
Alrighty.
He wants to say, wants to know if, Rick wants to know if it's snacks.
You can share, you just better replace it, cause you don't know, and I might eat it again.
As long as he doesn't come out looking like Whoopi Goldberg, we know he's not hungry. You're just not yourself when you're hungry.
Some mornings about eleven-thirty.
I'd say some of them mornings I probably did look like Whoopi Goldberg. What?
Mark, how are you doing?
It's the, it's the two thirty.
You leave us here later?
Yeah.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, good.
Am I next?
Judy, yes.
You bring in the classroom one.
I wanna know where the linen-
They bring, they bring Jeff coffee.
You could bring linen for everyone else.
Well, I have, stop drinking iced tea in the afternoon.
It looks a little medicinal, because of the staining on your cup.
No, it's cause my cups are all- I used to drink iced tea, I drank coffee morning, iced tea.
You know what, I'm gonna get more of it, I'm out of your face.
Yeah, so I'm going to the ice water and put my lemon in. I'm trying to be good, why, why go to the doctor?
Sam, I'm still waiting for my nox socks to go with Larry's.
I have not found, I have not found them anywhere. I found some of Carvet's socks.
We got a nice Christmas present from Healthy Communities, too. Yeah, nice chair.
A chair.
Mm-hmm. Yep, she had Christmas presents, so we stayed for the whole meeting. Oh, Lordy, cause I was like, how long we gotta stay? Get mine, sit and desert people for a little bit, but yeah, had a good time. It was interesting. They felt very sad that you snubbed them. They felt very sad that you snubbed them.
Why don't we go ahead? Mark, you wanna come up and?
Oh, sorry, I thought Ralph was next.
Oh. He's at two thirty, I, well, I was gonna-
Two thirty? Dentist favorite time?
You want to do Mark real quick?
Yes, yes, since Mark was kind enough to- What?
So I'm on the wrong page, hold on.
Me too.
I was ready for the other one.
Oh, I just jumped around.
How about page seventy-six?
Go ahead now?
Yep, go ahead.
Well, I had made my request to the auditor and got the auditor's budget back and didn't have any objections, uh, on that, so I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Do you guys have any questions?
No, sure didn't.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Mark. Don't you like a quick like that?
Forty-one now.
Why do you even come down?
Hi, Ralph.
Ralph. Forty-one.
Okay. Uh, I have no comments, but I assume Judy does.
I just said yes, okay.
Yeah, sheriff's tried that before. And he's got a gun.
And a taser and-
So recorder's budget's on page forty-one.
Okay. So have you made any adjustments, Kristen, to, uh, the grid for the recorder's office at all, or did we look at any of that, or?
So we did look at them the same as everyone else. I think that most of the employees in the office were already at or above the, the point where we thought they should be. I, um... I did take the MOU out of the budget currently until it is signed or agreed upon. I didn't know Judy wanted to continue what Ralph had done with the MOU in the past, so right now it is not in the budget.
Okay.
Um, so it could be added back in. Um, you will see it in the transfer in line. So Ralph had fifteen thousand, seven fifty-four in the budget. I know the four thousand was an estimate, I don't think he spent that much. He only had a couple of months where he had a hard type person. Fifteen hundred is where, where he ended up. So right now that MOU, I don't, I don't think it was terminated in any way, it just, I know there's gonna have to be a new one with Judy at the beginning of the year and what she wanted to do with it, we weren't sure yet. So right now it's not in the budget.
Okay.
It would have to be added to both sides.
So Judy, are you saying that, uh, that you need additional funds to have a lead deputy recorder at thirty-six thousand dollars per year, is that what I'm reading here?
Well, actually, yes, you were reading that, I would like to see if the commissioners would fund a hundred percent additional employee. If you go into the recorder's office and I brought some of the stuff needed to look at all the backlog of work. The last grant that I wrote was in two thousand and nine, that grant, we got the highest amount awarded, it was thirty-three thousand dollars. But when you take these aperture cards, you have to microfilm them, then you digitize them, and each step has a major process in doing that, it was very time consuming. What is not done is there's no index, you have a digital image but no index. With the documents online, it creates really a false advertisement in my opinion, because you're not getting a clear, for a title company or an attorney to get a clear title search, there's missing information. And that was something I campaigned on, I think that's very important. Uh, we have books A to Z, which is, which is called Books A to Z. They were taken apart in two thousand and fifteen. They are still not bound back and put out for public use. That's also a big deal because they are historical documents for genealogy purposes. I've had a lot of complaints about people not having access to those books. And those books were quoted two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, seventeen. The price to get those bound and make them accessible to the public again is about twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars. So you're looking at the Recorder's Trust Fund is gonna take a big hit the first year because I'm planning to correct that. So to offer paying fifty percent, if need be, of a full-time person's salary with an MOU agreement, I, I would do that. I just have to manage that budget so that these other issues are also being taken care of. Does that make sense?
Yeah, 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 we're just trying to take it all in today.
You don't have to answer today.
Yeah, that's right.
Especially Jeff, don't let him speak. Wait, think about it. And I, and if you need a tour, if you need more details, I, I have a lot of documentation to provide. So you can get a bigger picture, not always.
So obviously you're throwing a lot of us, stuff at us here today, so...
I didn't know what to do today, so I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. So I wanna, I'm gonna, we're gonna play a little tennis here, so you served and now I, I received and now I'm gonna serve and you're gonna receive, so anyway, uh, but, uh, one of the things that, uh, that I would really like to see us as a county do is, is to try to do things together more, and so I know you have some, some software that probably you like, but I'd really like to see us work towards getting everybody onto this DevNet system, so that when we record some of these documents, that then it goes to the assessor to assess and then the collector to collect, so... Not that you need to answer today, it, it may not be the most ideal system, but I think there's just some... I think for all of us to work off one record, I think there's some value.
Ideally, I agree, Chris, that would be perfect.
Right.
There's a lot of stipulations to the recorder's software that must be there, so I would be happy to look at it.
Okay. That's all I ask, so, anyway.
Larry, since you're here, DevNet does offer a recorder's piece that ties everybody together, so...
Yeah, it would be really.
They would be able to look... So assessor could look at the recorder's portion and see the documents come across, kinda like you do with the tax bill. Do you see it come from the assessor?
I, I don't know enough about it to answer that.
Okay.
I do only have a recorder's program.
Okay.
It, it makes a lot of sense if you're all tied together.
They do have a recorder's program, I don't know that it's as sophisticated as what we're accustomed to using presently. Uh, that would need to be checked in more thoroughly.
Sure.
That was my observation when I looked at it before.
It may not do everything that you need and there may be, there may be other stuff that you need, but if we can get everything on that one file, you know, on that one database that maybe another software could pull off of or something, so... Or maybe it's something that DevNet would even look at, trying to customize it to something that we, you know, customize reports or, I'm not sure how you guys interpret all that data or use that data, so... Anyway, it's, it's something that I just think that as we go down this road, we're on the right track, and so I'd just like to see us all be working together to...
I don't, uh, it's worth checking on, but at this, when I checked on it, when you were talking about it before, I, I don't know that DevNet is as far along with their recorder's offices as they are, you know, clerks and assessors.
Sure. Okay. Well, Judy, we'll, uh, so we're gonna talk about these things again and we'll try to let you know and we're gonna maybe talk about yours and ask you to come back and discuss it further, that'd be all right?
That'd be great, next year, I appreciate it.
One thing to throw out, um, I know we did talk about bonds the other day and the possibility of going together. Um, I have gotten one quote from Central Bank, I'm waiting on one from Not Not and one from T-Ball. I'm hoping to have those hopefully tomorrow. Um, can I get back on the agenda for Thursday morning? Um, Judy, we are trying to go out for a group bid on bonding and do yours and mine, Steve's and Sam's all together. Um, so we're working to do that and I will let you know as soon as I know for sure what's gonna happen.
Four years old ones instead of yearly.
Yeah, Steve's kinda the holdup, I think they did a background check on him and and it, it, he inflated so high, so, you know.
So I will let you know as soon as I know, I know you have contacted Central Bank and it's...
So much laughter here, veggie time, this is unusual. I don't like this at all.
For everyone all together.
Too much happiness in it.
She may not be getting back to you, it's kind of my fault I told her.
She sent me an email.
Okay, okay, just so you know, we're, we're working on it and we're gonna have something in place that's a January first, we're just not quite there yet, but hopefully I will have more information on Thursday morning.
Okay. Sounds good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All righty.
Oh, one other change while you're here. There was a state user fee that was flowing through the Recorder's Trust Fund. It pretty much was an in and out fee, it's a two dollar fee on recordings that comes in and then we pay it back out to the state. Um, I know I did talk to Ralph and Candace about possibly getting that into general fund with the other in and out fees, so like the Children's Health Trust Fund, um, the Housing Trust Fund, all of those are in and out fees that the recorder collects and then pays back out. Um, to make the Recorder's Trust Fund just the money that they have to spend and not that in and out, we're moving it to general fund. So you will see a new line in the general fund for the state reimbursement recorder user fee. Um, and you will see twenty-five thousand dollars of revenue and twenty-five thousand dollars of expense. So everything that comes in is paid back out, it's just to kinda get all of those fees grouped together and going in and out of the same places.
Those are paying. So what is our budget without all the in and out things? Do you have an actual figure for that? Because we got so many other ones.
Well, just in their fund, ninety-four thousand five hundred of their total budget is in and out fees.
Yeah. So when we're looking at our budget overall though, we're looking at all the in and outs.
You are, yes, I mean, any department that collects, except for Larry's, his goes into a separate fund, is in and out.
He's special.
He's special.
Oh, he's special.
Um, yes, most, most departments do include fees that we collect for other agencies to pay back out.
We get a cut of that, right?
Not always.
Just stop right there, because otherwise there'd be an administrative fee, we need to start charging.
I, I mean, it's no different than you heard now talking about all the fees that she collects and turns over to the county. Uh, a lot of those fees go to different places, like the fines that she collects go into, um, the school fund to get paid to the schools. They don't come to the county, even though she on her end thinks that she turns it over to the county, they actually go into the school fund and go to the schools, so. There you go.
I give you, I give you a percentage of everything I collect.
He does.
You get to do a pair of socks.
Any other question for Judy?
Where do the fees come in from the online subscriptions?
Are you asking what?
Where the, yeah, where, where are the fees coming in for the, uh, subscriptions to the online service that some of the, um, title companies and, um, no, the realtors have access to?
Recorder's tech fund, they, there's two funds, there's a recorder's fund, it's two dollars per document recorded, there's a reto, uh, recorder's tech fund.
Okay, technology fee.
And to keep that system going, there is an expense in all of that. I don't know that, that those numbers would be, Ralph probably would forget that.
Okay.
Chris, are you referring to the, the title companies, that two hundred and fifty?
Yeah, well, I think there was, the title company, there was like a yearly or a monthly and some...
It's a monthly fee, that goes to the recorder's.
And then somebody had, and then wasn't there a, a daily or a one document search or something?
Uh, one, I, I hear you talking about the, the two hundred and fifty dollars that the, the title companies pay, pay, and a few other places. There's only about five or six of those, and then that's been going on for quite a while.
Right.
But I bet what you're really wanting to ask about is the, the, the online, availability of data online, in which people can get online and pay for twenty, twenty dollars, have twenty-four hours of service. That twenty dollars we collect goes into the rec, goes into the recorder's fund like the other money did, the title company money, and with the twenty dollars, I envision using that, the money that we brought in for that to keep the online service up to date and, and, and with all the right software and for maintenance and that sort of stuff, to keep it on run, uh, going forward, so it's kinda self-supporting.
Okay. Thank you.
So is that part of your CIC software? The online.
That is, that was, that the online, the, the online data that we started a year or two ago. Yes, CIC, I think that was the nine thousand dollars that we paid out of the recorder's fund for the software, to, for the CIC to write that software.
So the original bill from CIC got paid out of the recorder's tech fund to do the online search process?
The, the recorder's fund paid for the software to be written so that we could go online with the data.
But like the annual fee that you pay the CIC for the maintenance and stuff of your software right now is coming out of Brian's budget?
Correct, correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was...
Yeah, yeah, the yearly maintenance, uh, is coming out of Brian's budget.
So now... Speak.
expense coming back out of here.
Right now, yeah. No.
And then may I ask a question?
Yep.
Then the capital purchases to keep the recorder's PCs, the scanner, because I know that there is a copy machine that is a two thousand and twelve, and to my knowledge from working with them in the past, those machines are good for a five to seven year span. Uh, so I think that's going to be needing to be replaced in the next year or two. Uh, the scanner, I'm not sure of the year on it, but it probably will be needing to be replaced. Or those equipment types of purchases under capital purchases for the IT budget spinning back and forth, hopefully it's coming out of the recorder's.
Good question.
So, yes.
Didn't we just get, we're, we got a new one, we can get our old one, right? Welcome to the family, getting their envy downs.
Thing went somewhere, I'm not sure. Steve maybe took it to his farm.
That thing might have got blown up, dude. Pieces of it, yeah, I'm fine with that, because it didn't work very often, so...
Nice, we gave Debbie a new one for Christmas.
So copy your machines, scanners, and then possibly computer.
So we need to get a list for the recorder's office.
Or, I mean, has that kinda been back and forth?
It's kinda, it's kinda been both ways, so, um, before Ralph, most of those purchases came out of the recorder's trust fund. Since Ralph's been here, it's been a little more of coming out of the IT budget for capital improvements, but... So it's kinda been done both ways and Judy asked me the same question and I'm not really sure what the right answer is.
Also, as, so if it's, every year I had Rich go through and look at the IT stuff and write down what, what we function with every day, you know, for update, you know, like the PCs and the, the technology that we use on a daily basis for the purpose of conducting the daily business. But the recorder's fund has been used for the wide, the wide format printer, you know, with, for, for Platts and surveys. Uh, we acquired that three to four years ago and, and recorder's fund was used for that. And this, this last year, we, what was it, seven thousand or eight thousand dollars, we used the recorder's fund to replace two older microfilm viewers. And we bought one, uh, we replaced those two older ones with one nice new one. And, and the recorder's fund was used for that.
And we didn't pick up the software, maybe it's, uh, I don't know, it's, uh, people wear it.
It sounds familiar. It sounds familiar.
So is the recorder's fund, what, what's it listed at, recorder statutory pool or?
Uh, it's a separate fund, oh, forty-two.
Page forty-two.
Yeah, so it gets the recorder's trust fund, it's a two dollar fee and then there's the technology fees that go into there and then also his online access charges are current.
I think the, the recorder's fund has a balance today, uh, two...
And that's the total budget, the cash, probably about one eighty.
They kind of cash forward there.
Yeah, so your cash forward. Expected cash forward's about a hundred and seventy-eight thousand is what we projected.
And then all the other revenues add up to that two thirty.
Yeah, so total, total budget would be your cash forward plus the revenue you're expected to, or next year, would be the two thirty-eight.
So it brings in about sixty thousand dollars a year.
Yeah.
Times a little more.
Um, well, so... Yes, um...
It's kinda odd, it's gone down.
Well, so that twenty-five thousand dollar state user fee
Yep.
used to flow through this fund. So that twenty-five got moved out of this fund and back to general, that's what I was talking about earlier. So that's why you're seeing that eighty thousand moves to down to the fifty-nine is that twenty-five thousand got moved from. That's why you're seeing that eighty thousand moves down to the fifty-nine, is that twenty-five thousand got removed from this budget.
Bless you. What'd you do?
Uh, I sneezed.
Any, any other questions for Ralph or Judy? No, thank you all, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
I see that we have made it through all the budget schedule theory, is there anything else you guys wanna talk about today? What? He did not, just, he does not got any chance. He's kinda like you. Completely happy with what the auditor proposed.
There were a couple that really sucked up to, to Chris, to, to, I'll tell you what, it was, it was almost, it was almost sickening.
Here we go, let it out, let it all out.
Don't keep my mouth shut. I'm always appreciative of what the commission gives.
Lay it on a little thick.
Get out forever, but.
Okay, so then tomorrow, what are we doing tomorrow?
I know even that Kristen's not fair to me, that you all will be.
No, 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 I mean, budget-wise, tomorrow and Thursday, what are we doing? Are we, are we going in, so, bring my lunch, pack my lunch and be ready to tear into stuff tomorrow? We're not starting till nine.
I'd like to spend as much time as possible tomorrow, so that hopefully we don't have to spend as much time on Thursday or next week, so as much as we can get through tomorrow.
So whatever, we don't finish tomorrow and Thursday, we're, we got stuff scheduled the following week too?
Week twelfth and thirteenth are tentative for if we need them.
Okay, cause I know we got something else tomorrow at one. So what do we got, tomorrow at one, we've got that, and. I guess.
So we can go in Thursday, we could.
What are we gonna do? I'd just assume not to spend.
We need to go through all of the requests that were made today. We need to hit on the budgets that are under you guys that no one else came in to talk about, cause we haven't talked about any of those. So if there's any changes you wanna make to sales tax or
Right.
the health insurance fund or anything like that.
Okay.
We need to go over salaries at some point.
You don't wanna start at eight o'clock?
Tomorrow?
It's already on, it's just for nine, we can't do it now.
But we're going nine to, nine to noon, or whatever time, cause we got our other meeting tomorrow, so we won't have much time to do that.
So let's try to.
Thursday? Are we gonna be done at noon? Just till noon, right, so we can make plans for other stuff afternoon?
Unless you want to go longer on Thursday.
I just need to know when I can plan other stuff, cause this is a typically very busy year for everything.
Try to hit easy ones tomorrow.
Right in the face, we're hitting them.
The sheriff, Public Works.
Okay.
EMS to Thursday.
I mean, we're here.
Are you sure you don't wanna try and push through all those tomorrow and do salary stuff on Thursday?
We can try to push you everything tomorrow.
It's not gonna take that long, but I mean, I would like to take, look at it, it's gonna take some time.
I don't care, whatever, I don't think there were a lot of changes requested today, so I think we can hit quite a few of them.
I mean, we might be able to hit EMS tomorrow, but I just want, you know, if we got questions, I don't think Matt had a whole lot of things, he was pretty good with everything, so, just review that.
Well, I guess tomorrow I would rather get through most of them, so that if we do have other questions, they have time to bring it back and tell us what you wanna know. Cause at some point, you're gonna have some questions that they have to answer for you, and you're gonna have to give them time to get back up here and do it. So.
That's fine, buddy. Start at the front, work your way to back.
No, I was just asking, I, either way, you wanna go about it, we can.
Just, just start at the beginning of the book and work our way through it.
One way or another, we're gonna have to do it all, so I mean, how do we do it?
There's always easier ones than there are.
I don't say, I don't care if we get deep in something, we can get it done, and then if we have a little time left, we can punch out a couple of small ones, but, yeah, going from front to back is a.
Why not, we wanna skip one or something, somewhere else we can do that.
I'm gonna plan on doing stuff then, Thursday, getting out here at noon, since we added on the agenda for nine to noon anyway. And then if we got stuff left, we've got next week, two tentative.
Three days.
I think it's just the.
Well, Tuesday, we got a meeting, but I don't think we got a budget on there.
Yeah, I think just the twelfth and the thirteenth.
And we could spend a whole week on it if we want to, otherwise, we can plow through it, make some decisions and get done. I'm, it's not that I like to argue, but.
Liar.
About as picking on me today, man.
Before we start tomorrow.
I, I gotta eat healthy now, I just went to a Healthy Schools, Healthy Communities meeting and got guilt tripped all over the place, just cause I brought a soda.
What'd they serve you for lunch?
Chipotle?
Chipotle.
Ken, I'm gonna bring a few, two, three.
We're gonna have more of their meetings, they have good food.
Two or three questions here before we go any further?
No.
Sure, no, yeah.
She said to say no.
This transfer we don't want to sign, assessor?
Not really.
Okay, I'm fine with that, I'm just making sure that that's the case at the moment.
Look at that, that's the travel expenses.
Well, I looked at it and talked to them, they went.
Do you know that?
They went together.
Well, I sent, I sent the president of the assessor a message, and I said, can you verify that Chris did that training? And he said, no, so then why'd you sign it? It's like I signed all of them, I said, well, that's not what I asked, I said, was he there? Said, you signed it, he was there, so, that means that you saw him there. So I, the assessors that I talked to at MAC said that he doesn't go to any of the meetings. So, just saying.
You gonna be a part of the email I have from the president of the assessor?
You know, I think filing a false certificate in order to get two thousand dollars is a criminal offense.
There's receipts for the hotel in there, so did he not go to the hotel and check in and pay for it?
Well, just cause you went to the hotel, just cause you were in Branson, doesn't mean that you were at the training.
Well, maybe he was sick.
Do y'all have anything about my budget, or you got it all?
We're good, unless you had something you wanted to talk about.
No, just a couple of computers coming out of the collector's fund, but I'm not sure if I should talk to the collector about that, or do y'all have permission to pay for them? Since we have DevNet on, I think Larry should have paid for two of them. I told Steve I'd be glad to have Brian take DevNet off their computers. And we'd be down in your office all the time, you got extra space down there? For Dawn, not for you. All right then, thank you.
All right, thanks.
It doesn't matter to me, I'm just trying to make sure we're on the same page with what was signed this morning, so.
So, if, if the, if he's trying to get reimbursed for money for false expenses, it is an issue.
That's where I'm at.
If he went up there, but he didn't go to the meetings, I don't know if I can do anything about that. We can zero the training budget and have him come and give a report the next time we send him to one of those.
Well, I think that's the problem at the moment, is that he's out of money in his training and needs to transfer to pay these, so he's.
But is that, was that because they sent the other one to the assessor training?
Yeah.
And so, they really had money for this, but not for that, or vice versa, they ran out of money.
I don't think that it states in there what they have to use their meetings and travel money off, if they get a certain amount in or do with it as you please, but he knows he's required to go to this one.
Somebody put it back in that blue envelope, so I thought it was okay to sign, so I signed it. My signature's on there.
Well, if, if he's got the certificate saying he attended, then I think, I guess I'll probably sign it. Cause he didn't, I mean, he was there, it's.
No, no.
Well.
No, he picked up the certificate, I mean, so he.
Sam, I've been told by the president, I actually have an email, I didn't ask for this information, she sent it to me. Said Chris always shows up in the morning, signs in and leaves, and they don't see him again until dinner.
Not that many assessors at that conference, a hundred and fourteen?
Well, probably not that many.
So, I mean, you, you can sign it, I'm not telling you to sign it.
No.
So if it was in Jeff City, it'd be okay, cause he could go down there, sign in, leave, sign in, leave next day, get a certificate. But since he had to drive down there and stay there. And, I don't know if there's any way for us to have any proof that says he wasn't at any of the training? I know what you're saying, that nobody sees him, so. But have you been to MAC training, or C-CAM training?
No, but I have been to collector's training, and, and I go and stay, and it's painful.
Where's yours at?
Here in town.
We will have the same.
That's one of the most painful things, I'm never gonna go anywhere.
In February, we'll have the same speakers that spoke to us down at Tantara, so.
Well, and I get that.
Yeah, it's.
If you really wanna fix it, then let's have our lobbyists go in and have them change state law about us even having to do the stupid training, because it's a waste of taxpayers' money, bottom line.
Well, this is a waste of taxpayers' money.
Well, what is a waste of taxpayers' money, is having an elected official that never shows up to work, doesn't do squat, and still gets to collect a paycheck. I mean, if somebody like that worked for you, or Jeff, or me, he'd have been fired long ago. I mean, I'm not saying he's gotta be here all the time, but, you know, more than a few hours a year.
Well, I'm just gonna argue the one about the training thing, so.
Ralph had his prostate removed two weeks ago, and he's back at work today, was back at work yesterday, in fact, he was even in last Friday.
I didn't feel good either, I ate some salad last night, had my gut all messed up. I'm serious, I'm not doing that again.
Did you eat some of that romaine? Did you have your fridge for two weeks?
Do you think we oughta recess?
I can tell you one.
We're just kinda sliding down.
I can tell you one worse than that.
You know what, I'm gonna make a motion, we, we recess until four thirty.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, yes, oh.
I got those pay forms and things you didn't talk about.
Well, that doesn't mean we can't sign those or not sign them.
All right, so we can shut this thing off then if we're done. Can't talk about it now, we're out of session.
Stop it.
No, we're out of session, we can't talk about it, we don't have it on the agenda, it needs to be put on the agenda.
Okay, Thursday?
I don't care.
Pay forms Thursday?
We don't, pay forms aren't on the agenda, are they? Oh. So, what, what should she be starting at to move into the position, what is the starting salary at that?
We don't really have one at the moment, in the budget, I propose thirty-two.